Okay, we're gonna get ready to call the meeting to order for Monday, August 26th, 2019. Mr. Beederman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Dr. Rower, Mr. Schreier?
Here.
Megan Sparks?
Here.
And Annie Self?
Here, please rise for the Club of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of America's kings and queens, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have approval of the agenda as presented.
Go.
Second.
Call the roll please, Mr. Beederman.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. Uh, now we're gonna have Board of Education reports. Uh, Mrs. Sparks, with the legislative report.
There's nothing to report.
Okay, there.
I believe so, some reasons.
All right. Okay, now we allow the students' board of ed-.
Hi, my name is Jacob Myers and I'm a senior this year at Centerville High School. So, one of the big projects that we're doing right now is Spirit Chain. So, one of the main fundraisers that we did this weekend was Paint the Parking Lot. This was week one of two. Um, so, there's at least thirty to forty spots that are already painted out there and we sold upwards of a hundred to a hundred fifty spots and we're still selling spots to be painted next weekend. Um, it is going very well. A few minor hiccups with the amount of paint that we got, but other than that, it was a huge success and just thank you to the administrative staff for the support. I'll hand it over to Madison for our Spirit Festival.
Hello, my name is Madison Ernest and I'm a senior at Centerville High School. One of the other activities that we will be doing for Spirit Chain is the Spirit Festival, which will be held October fourteenth at Centerville High School. There'll be four food trucks, uh, games, a car smash, and, uh, forte and coeds performing there as well. So, it'd be amazing to see everybody.
Hi, my name is Grace Cede. Um, so, last week, we went to Tower Heights for the open house. Um, so, we just, we talked with parents about our candy and comments program and we're actually going to be continuing it in the middle schools. So, we will go once a month to the middle schools to talk with the middle schoolers and get them on board with candy and comments to hear their suggestions.
Hello, my name is Mohammed Mustafa. I'm a sophomore at Centerville High School and one of the places that we're focusing our efforts on is communicating with the students on social media and making our presence, uh, visible there with just more active posts and showing kids that, you know, we're trying to just really move them around. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Wagner. I'm a junior. Uh, along with the student council and a few interested people, we have our Elks Going Green program, which is kind of our sustainability movement at the high school. And currently, we're working on raising money possibly through some shirts that Mohammed has designed as well as some other things to come up with with fundraising. And we're gonna use that to get all the plastic bins within the high school for every room so they're that, so that their uniform will know where they are as well as larger bins for our stadium and for our cafeterias.
Okay. And then Ben, um, Ben Campbell is our liaison for, he likes to do policy and research, so he's at mock trial tonight, so he sent me a note. He's reviewing literature about the rise of mental illness in recent generations and how factors like social media, body image, and school socialization may lead to this trend. What practice of school can, schools can employ to fight this trend and accommodate students with mental illness? So, that's, I'm sure we'll do a great job on that. Um, I wanna commend these five students. They did a great job representing the board on the Tower Heights Open House. They had several parents come to them, um, that were not familiar with our program and so they had a lot of, um, good things to say and I was very proud of them. So, um, we are, our goal, which we left out, we need to earn twenty-five hundred dollars, Mr. Yuxian's kind of offered to match that because it could, it costs five thousand dollars to these giant recycling bins that went into the stadium. So, um, that is our goal. So, we're looking at Optimist Club, I think it's, uh, Jacob and Madison worked on a brand to go to Optimist Club for a way to get her back to the map as well. So, hopefully when we start selling shirts, we'll all get your green shirt as well. We're gonna have, I think, we're looking on a Green Outlight, that right? Or? Okay, thank you very much. Um, next we have hearing of the public. The Board of Education provides us as a convenient opportunity for public comment before any official action is taken. The board president will ask if anyone would like to address the board. Adult speakers are requested to address the board from the podium, state their name and address, and students only need to state their names. We ask that all who speak to limit their comments to no more than three minutes as the board does have pre-scheduled reports and action items on the agenda. The board will listen to all who speak but generally not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Matters requiring follow-up will be directed to the superintendent. Individual board members can be contacted for a set meeting appointment and written correspondence may be down to the board office. Do we have anybody here? Okay. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Paul Sechek. I'm a resident of fifty-seven, seventy-seven Hillegrin Drive, Washington Township. On July seventh, I wrote an email to the chairperson and I addressed my concern relative to the five point nine mil levy which is being proposed. And the gist of my question, the gist of my email was, would you please define for me the cost savings, the cost cutting, and the proposed cost reductions that the school district has or intends to implement prior to asking the public for a five point nine mil increase? The chairwoman was very gracious and responded the very, the next day, July eighth, sent extensive email, explained all of the costs that had increased and the different demands around the school district, but failed to respond to my basic question, what cuts are being implemented? On July tenth, I responded to the chairperson and I said, "Thank you for your email, but you did not respond to my question. Would you please do so?" To that, I received no response. So, I adhered to the board meeting to address this once again. My concern is about two years ago, the Dayton Daily News wrote an article in which they compared all of the school districts in the local area, looking at, at costs, benefits, and salaries. And in that, they identified the school district, who was low, who was medium, and who was high. The article should have been entitled, "Except for Centerville," because as they went through the article, they identified the low, medium, and high, and then the next sentence was, "Except for Centerville, who does this?" And the, what the, what the "this" is was a higher level of compensation, a higher level of benefit, a higher level of expense, whatever the case may be, but Centerville was always outside of the norm. And so, when we're gonna come to the public and we're gonna ask for five point nine mils so that my family and the families of the district can do with less, I'd like to know why, what the school district has done to cut this. I'm not against funding the school district. I am not against teachers and salary and administrators earning a representative salary, but I'd like to know what the balance is. If my income goes down and my expenses go up, the normal thing that I do is cut my expenses. I try to get a balance. And I'd like to know what the school district has done to achieve that balance before they come to me and the taxpayers one more time to ask for more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you mind, if you're forty, to step away and make sure Mr. Beederman?
He doesn't, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll try to get back with you. Thank you for your time. Bye.
Hi, I'm Jackie Zofki. I live at sixty-five fifty-four Grand Swamp Lane in Washington Township. And I'm here today because I heard a story recently that really drove a passion within me and that passion is, uh, working with those with food insecurities and how to repurpose untouched prepared foods. I spent a good portion of Friday working with the people from Elkhart, Indiana and talking with them about the program that they have established. I talked with people from the school as well as the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I even talked with the people from the nonprofit. And so, as a result of talking with them, I thought, well, this would be a good project called Elks with a Heart, Lessons Learned from Elk's Heart. And I thought that would really be a great thing for us since I know that being a substitute teacher over the last fifteen years and working in this district, I saw a lot of students who would come in on Monday and would be a little bit more sluggish. And I know that we have the Food to Go program and I also worked with the Food for Summer program previously. But this would be something that would actually kind of partner with them and be a little bit more of an extension to that. A lot of the things that they would have would be like real meals instead of just kind of a snack program. So, I went ahead and I contacted Olivia Stone at Student Services. I also contacted Mark Mitrovic with a culinary group and I got some information about them. I even contacted some registered dietitians that have alumni, um, since I have three children who are alumni of the district. And so, I've got my feelers out there and Facebook and all their social media platforms to try to get some volunteers to try to set this up. Even those that have worked within the schools at the Tower Garden level, I've helped a lot of the schools get the Tower Gardens and learn about food and how to eat and how to eat responsibly. So, this is just something that I have a huge passion for. I would love to bring this to Centerville and I take, especially now with everything going on in the world and how we wanna make sure that Dayton is known, especially Centerville, for people who care and people who love, this would be a great way to do it. So, I wanted to, um, see what I can do to start a nonprofit called Elks with a Heart.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Beederman, how was it to get your confirmation?
Don't worry about it.
All right, thank you. Great idea. Um, does anyone have any, do you want to add, anybody wanna come up? Okay. All right, so we will go on to the training problems. Sorry, superintendent's report, my apologies.
No problem. Uh, the first report we have tonight is by, uh, Mr. Bob Yuck, who's gonna give us a curriculum update.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Just wanted to take a minute to talk for a few seconds about some of the things that we've tried to accomplish with our staff over the summer, also the direction that we're headed, not only for this year but for the next several years. This is something that we've been working on, uh, for the past, really, two years, you'll see it in some of the examples, but, and then finalize with just a comment or two about the third grade reading guarantee. But starting with this past summer, uh, we did have five hundred and thirty-eight teachers participate in ninety course offerings that were held here in, in the district. We also had an additional ninety-four classified staff participated in those offerings. And then two hundred and forty teachers were also engaged in some kind of self-directed, uh, learning proposal, which has to be approved, uh, by the, the staff development committee. After this summer, then, we, we will continue to focus on, on three different strategies with our staff. One is trying to meet the needs of all learners, that strategy of differentiating our curriculum for every child in our class. Sounds simple enough, but, but that is a challenge and something very different than the model that used to be practiced, say, twenty, thirty years ago. In addition to that, we have focused on John Hattie's work. He has a book, Visible Learning, that's one of his books. But he focuses on knowing your impact and we believe that we all have an impact on our students. Doesn't matter whether we're teachers, whether we're administrators, whether we're bus drivers, custodians, paraprofessionals and so forth, or board education members. We all have an impact on our children. Knowing our impact and doing what we can to continue to allow our students to reach their potential as learners is critical for us. And then finally, uh, I've mentioned this before, we have had a partnership with the University of Dayton and it's through that, uh, we have focused on three different core strategies. How do we empower students to find purpose? How do we create a collaborative learning community? And how do we redefine student success through failure and perseverance? That last one sometimes is tough for our students. It's in fact tough for all people because we have learned that over time, that persevering and learning through failure has become more and more a challenge for our students. It is important that, that, that we continue to instill in them that ability. Some specific examples of the three that I just mentioned. One is our partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools. I'd mentioned to this to you at the board work session last week, but thought it was important to share with our community that we have developed this partnership, um, in order to focus on our advanced placement programs and trying to, uh, reach higher levels of participation from our underrepresented students. They have continued this work. Equal Opportunity Schools has done this work throughout the country and so our partnership with them will allow us to focus specifically on that here in our schools. We believe this is important and so this work is being accomplished through a couple of grants. One is a private grant and the other are federal grants, uh, that allow that to occur at, at no cost to our taxpayers. In addition to that, we are in the process of looking at our math program, K through twelve, quite frankly. All of those are at least ten years old. It, it is time for us to begin to look again at the strategies, strategies that we're using to teach mathematics at all grade levels and so we'll begin that process. Certainly, um, our ability to move forward on this is somewhat contingent upon that, uh, maybe, or November fifth, eleven. The last high school adoption was in two thousand and nine. Uh, the middle school program was initially adopted in 'oh one. We did reaffirm that adoption then in two thousand and eight. And finally, the elementary program has been with us since two thousand and ten. That's why we're taking this year to try and, uh, to look again and investigate whether in fact we wanna re-up with that, any of those programs, or if it's time for us to look in a little different direction. Keeping in mind that, that we wanna focus on these three elements with anything that we do. And then finally, as I mentioned, as I started, the third grade reading guarantee is something that the state has imposed upon us. Uh, through their infinite wisdom, they've made the decision that students that don't make a specific reading cut score, that those students should be retained in third grade. Now, the problem with that is the scores that they're using aren't standardized scores and in fact, there's no real guarantee that that measure has any, um, has, it has any validity in terms of the success of our students. So, that's a challenge for us, but we've continued to try and modify to meet that, third grade reading guarantee. The problem is that we do know that research is very clear about retention and the negative impact it has on a student's success over time. So, I struggle with a test that's not been validated through any kind of standardized measure to be used in order to retain a child when we know that retention, more often than not, is damaging. Nonetheless, that's, that's the system that we have. And, and lastly, I just wanted to point out that they've continued to raise that cut score the last three years and in fact, that score is going up again, uh, for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. I just believe it's important for our, our community to understand that some of the guidelines that are forced upon us by the state seem to make no sense when you look at it in, as a response to research. That's really all I have unless there are questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. The next report will be by, uh, Mr. John Westney, our Director of Business Operations.
Good evening. I got a lot of pictures to show tonight, so I would like us to take a few minutes to share with the Board of Education and our community several permanent improvement projects that took place, uh, here in the district over the summer. HVAC replacement, uh, we had eighteen HVAC classroom units that were replaced at Normandy, John Hole, and Stanley Elementary. The twenty-five-year-old units, uh, were replaced and tied into the existing chilled water system, uh, at those three locations. The new, more efficient units, uh, will save on energy costs as they require less electricity than the old units. The new units are also connected to our controls program, which allows us to monitor, uh, each of those buildings and those units twenty-four hours a day, uh, seven days a week. The finished units, uh, were completed and up and running just, uh, a few days prior to the start of the school year. It was nice having those units last week when we had ninety-degree temperatures outside and able to cool those classrooms. At Driscoll and John Hole, uh, we went through a project in which we replaced and upgraded, uh, four student and staff restrooms. Uh, the upgrades included new flooring, new partitions, paint, and new, uh, restroom fixtures. Uh, concrete and transportation and really throughout the district, we had several concrete and asphalt projects. Uh, this is a project, uh, the concrete exit pad at Transportation, uh, where we have, uh, about a hundred and twenty buses that leave that exit, uh, every day during the school year. The weight and number of buses at our transportation center just causes a lot of stress on our concrete and asphalt and really continues to keep that, our maintenance project for us there just because of the amount of travel, uh, in that area. Uh, Primary Village North, uh, we had a water line replacement. Uh, we replaced old galvanized water pipe for both the hot and cold water supply. Uh, in addition, we upgraded the hot water system that now provides hot water more efficiently and evenly through all sections of the original building. And at Centerville High School, I believe it or not, it's been three years, uh, we've gone through, uh, a project where we've replaced approximately sixty-five thousand square feet of carpet. Uh, this past summer, we replaced carpet in the south unit, the hallways and commons. Uh, in addition, we replaced carpet in several classrooms in all three units. And then additional projects just to mention include classroom carpet replacement, concrete repair, additional parking and asphalt repair, uh, new water fountains, uh, and new room renovations, uh, throughout the district. So, just a quick snapshot of some of the projects that took place that we used our, our permanent improvement funds to complete. That concludes our presentation unless there's any questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Um, I wanted to kind of bring up the, uh, at the very end of all the reports and just provide a quick update about the start of the school year. And so, um, it's become kind of a very strong tradition here at Centerville City Schools for us to have an opening day kickoff meeting with all of our staff. And we have, uh, an opportunity to bring all of our staff from all areas of our operation together in the Performing Arts Center. So, we have about eleven hundred staff members, uh, in the Performing Arts Center and it's just a great venue, a great opportunity to address the staff and provide some opening comments about the upcoming school year. Um, it's kind of characterized by an opportunity, obviously, for all the staff to come back and before the meeting even starts, it's great to feel all the energy and the positive, uh, vibes that are out there because staff are renew, reu, uh, reuniting and renewing acquaintances and, and, uh, you know, getting to see people that they haven't seen over the summer. So, it's a, a very positive, uh, way to start the school year. It's something that, uh, I've had an opportunity to do for the last eleven years and some previous superintendents actually started that tradition. So, uh, kind of going along with the curriculum department, uh, my comments centered about, uh, the theme of knowing your impact. And again, I talked, just like Mr. Yuck said, that it doesn't matter what department, what group, what agency, um, what role you play in Centerville City Schools, everybody makes an impact. And, you know, if you think about a student's day, it starts being picked up by the bus. Uh, the bus drivers have a huge impact, uh, way a student starts their day, they safely transport them to school. And in some cases, our students are, are going to, uh, the cafeteria or the cafeteria or whatever and they're getting breakfast and seeing, uh, folks in our food service operation for breakfast. Uh, obviously, the classroom teachers have a huge role, principals, um, but every person at our establishment, in our organization, makes a big impact every single day. I also wanted to highlight, uh, as Mr. Westney said, there were a lot of things that took place over the summer. Uh, we work hard to make sure that our facilities are in good shape. And, uh, we try to be very fiscally responsible by having a, a great maintenance staff that we do a lot of the work ourselves. And so, even in the wintertime, they're the ones that are responsible for all the plowing and salting and, um, you know, keeping us in session when many times other school districts are not in session. So, again, everybody makes an impact. Everybody, um, uh, plays a role, a very important role in making Centerville City Schools all that it can be. Also, one of the things that I also think is special, uh, about our district is that we have a variety of different committees. And those are very collaborative, cooperative committees, uh, with our teachers association. Uh, there are things that Mr. Yuck's mentioned, our staff development committee that provided the summer institute and all of those, uh, I think he said, over ninety-plus offerings that our staff participated in this summer. Um, so, that's just one example of the committees, but we have a teacher licensure committee, a mentor committee, a wellness committee, and these are all collaboratively, uh, run by both, uh, administrators, teachers, all of us working together, uh, to support each other and making sure that there is learning going on, uh, not just throughout the school year but across the summer and other breaks as well. The other thing that, uh, that we started just recently is a diversity and equity and inclusion, uh, committee and their responsibilities include making sure that, uh, we are, uh, making sure that we're addressing the diversity that we have in our community and in our school district. Uh, they've been very well received and we have ongoing sessions planned throughout this school year for additional learning in that area as well. So, and then, uh, Mr. Yuck's mentioned the partnership. And so, the partnership that we had with the University of Dayton is continuing, only it's now continuing with our teacher leaders who continue to work, uh, with the things that they worked on for the last two years with the University of Dayton and are actually leading our staff, um, in the direction of, uh, beyond that collaboration, which he mentioned just a few minutes ago. The other thing we talked about, which is the same thing that's now, uh, posted on our website, is, um, like the gentleman said, we do have a levy on the November ballot and, uh, you know, we, as the Board of Education and as the administrative team, we've been working hard for over a year, maybe even a year and a half now to, uh, look ahead and look at our finances and look at, uh, where we knew that we were maybe heading. And so, um, we've worked hard really since January of last year, reaching out to our internal and external stakeholders. Uh, we could, used, um, a variety of different methods to gather information. Uh, some of those involved in-depth phone interviews, focus groups that we had in the district, and then a four-hundred sample phone survey that was completed just after spring break. Um, so, one of the things that, that we've learned from our community, from especially, um, both our internal and our external stakeholders is that, um, you know, our, our district does have a growing population and our enrollment has increased over the last three years, uh, which has presented some challenges for us. Uh, we did know that, that down the road eventually, that our, uh, revenue stream was going to, uh, our expenditures were going to exceed our revenue stream and that, um, we would have to go back, uh, unfortunately, to the community for financial support. We receive about thirteen percent of our revenue from the state. I know Mr. Beederman's probably gonna mention something about that tonight, maybe a little bit, um, whereas other districts receive a lot more from the state. Our, a lot of our buildings, even though they're in very good shape, are getting, we have one of our school buildings which is, uh, ninety-five years old and most, if not all of our buildings are over fifty years old. And so, um, the one mill that we have for permanent improvements, uh, can and will be used to make sure that those facilities are kept in good, um, in good repair, make sure that the infrastructures and everything are sound, and make sure that long-term, our facilities are in good shape for our students. The other thing that, uh, we hope to be able to do is, is continue to retain and recruit high-quality teachers. Uh, there is a teacher shortage going on right now in the state of Ohio. We've been fortunate to hire and get the best of the best. We wanna continue to be able to do that. Uh, we wanna make sure that we can continue to keep our staff and students safe. It's unfortunate that we do have to worry about those kinds of things in today's world, but, but we do and, and we do need to deal with that. Uh, Mr. Yuck's mentioned a little bit about our advanced placement programs and our college readiness programs and our career programs. Uh, our parent community has come to expect the excellence that we provide at Centerville High School here in all of those areas and we'd like to continue to keep those, uh, programs in place, if not even try to expand some of those and also maintain reasonable class sizes. So, those are some of the things that we're looking at, uh, moving ahead. Um, it's been six years since the last time we went back and, and asked the community to pass a levy. Uh, we've worked hard to be fiscally responsible for, uh, those six years and, uh, we're gonna be moving forward this November. So, um, those are, again, just the things that are posted on our website. So those are, again, just the things that are posted on our website right now, and those were some of the things that we also shared at the opening day meeting. So we're working on that right now. So any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, we will go to Mr. Beederman with the Treasury Report.
This is the August Treasurer's Financial Report for the month of July. That will also include some state revenue comparison data from the past year. This report includes some information about the annual budget that will be ready for board approval in the form of a five-year forecast and a narrative appropriation document next month. We are only one month into the new fiscal year 2019-20, so it's too early to say much at this time when comparing amounts received, comparing the amounts to what we received last year. It is important to say that 2019-20 should be a normal collection year for real estate property tax collections. Many taxpayers took advantage of the tax law changes and paid their taxes early in calendar year 2017, which caused an increase in the fiscal year 2017-18 and a decrease in fiscal year 2018-19. Again, this fiscal year should be back to a more normal collection year, but we're only one month in. Our school district once again received the lowest state revenue per student in the county for 2018-19 school year. This chart shows that we received $1,766 per student, and the highest revenue per student received in Montgomery County was Trotwood at $8,776 per student. Centralville received $7,000 less state funding per student in this comparison. This type of discrepancy in state funding has a long history and continues to be a problem across the state. In a most basic explanation, our state legislators believe that our community has self-sustaining capabilities to help fund the school district.
Mr. Beederman? Sorry, you're wrong, but with these numbers, maybe you'll ask the different when we ask Lester's, when Mr. Butler came in, he said, there's no formula that they can share with us as to why you can't use a standard versus Trotwood, is that correct? Not a standard, it's not a standard formula. I can't hear you. Oh, sorry. Sorry. My question, can you all hear me? Sorry. My question to Mr. Beederman was last week during our work session, Mr. Butler from the State, from the State of Kansas came to visit with us, and we were talking about this, that it's maddening that we work really hard, just like other districts do. And we've asked where the formula is as to how they come up with this equation, like how do we get 1,700 and Trotwood gets, maybe more in their school district to understand that, but magic formula.
That's a very good question. Unfortunately, every school district in the state of Ohio is on this formula or guaranteed funding system through the state, but not everybody is treated the same. There's different factors that go into that calculation that treats every school district different. For example, the valuation of our community, which is the value of our communities, the properties in our community are much higher than somebody else, so that causes, in this formula funding, our revenue to be much less. There are wealth factors in our community. The income factors of the people that live in our community are higher than many other communities, so that drives down. And those are two examples of how our state funding is driven down in those calculations. But there's also other things that don't even make sense at all, that have been passed down from model to model to model, from governor to governor to governor for the past 40, 50, 60 years that are broken, and they never get completely fixed. And unfortunately, we usually fall on the wrong side of almost all those various calculations. I gave an example of Oakwood, who is similar in value and income than us, and could be argued that those two factors could be higher, but they get more state funding per student than we do. And it goes back to a model of the state funding that occurred many years ago when they had a little blip or an increase in enrollment, and it changed their base funding amount, and it's still being passed on to this day and not being corrected. So that being said, yes, there is a model out there, yes, it is broken, and no, it's not being fixed in the next two-year biennial budget either. If that helps explain it all.
I think it's important for people to have an understanding of that. Thank you.
Any other questions before I move on to the next slide?
I have a question. Who is the state rep that you talked to?
Representative Butler?
Butler?
He just came to share, we had question and answer time, and that was one of the things that came up, because there is no magic formula, and we wondered why. Our students need the same things that other students need in every single district across the board.
I'm surprised that people on the school board didn't realize that there was that going on in the state.
No, we knew about it. I just wanted publicly for Mr. Beederman to talk about it.
Yeah, we report this fairly regularly, and one of the things that I don't even have the slide up tonight, and I've done it over and over and over again, Dr. Henderson spoke to it this evening, our state funding formula mechanism for 2018-19 only generated 13.7% of our overall revenue pot for the school district. So it's pretty minor, pretty minor in comparison to a lot of other school districts in the state of Ohio. Our percentage is really low.
We've known about this. We just, I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, if you vote for the right people during the election, it's your state reps, they'll help you out.
Correct.
You're voting for the wrong people. Sorry, that's how it's...
Moving on. Continuing, continuing, continuing on with this same trend, the discrepancy and discrepancy in state revenue per student funding extends further when looking in comparison to the charter schools in Ohio. Our 1,776 per student in 2018-19 was $5,865 less than what charter schools receive for each student attending a charter school while living in the Centralville School District attendance area. To magnify this state funding discrepancy even further, charter schools are given their funding by deducting these funds as an expense directly from the Centralville School District state payments. The charter schools with students living in Centralville attendance area received a total of $679,739 last year through this expense deduction to our school district.
Miss, before you go on, so the state gives us 1,766. They take $5,866 from what we're supposed to get, not just what they give us, but money that our taxpayers are creating for us.
And the only reason that's not more than we take in as full, because we're only talking like 90 students or whatever that calculation is to get to the $679,000. So as that, if that charter school student population grows and they live in our attendance area, this number grows even larger each year as a deduction to our revenue.
And most of the students from this district is a quote-unquote charter school or in one of the online schools, is that right?
A lot of them are online schools. A lot of them are.
People ought to be outraged by that, in my opinion. People knew that, they should be outraged.
And again, there's no formula for that either.
You could do something about it.
So moving away from state funding, I've spent some time on that this evening, and my presentation's fairly short this evening. I'd just like to share in this final slide, I will mention that the general fund revenue and expense budget will be ready for board approval at the next regular September board meeting in the form of a new five-year forecast and a narrative appropriation document that we review the last two months at the board work session. There are two main areas of increase in 2019-20. 2019-20 will be the final year of the negotiated salary, contractually approved, $1 figures, and claims exceeded dental insurance premium each of the last two years. So we are expecting a double-digit increase now in the premium for our dental insurance. We are also expecting a single-digit increase to our self-funded medical insurance program, but it could be higher than originally anticipated in our previously approved five-year forecast. Both of these areas are being taken into additional consideration, establishing the 2019-20 budget and beyond. That concludes my report this evening, unless there's any further questions from the Board of Education.
Thank you.
If you want to reiterate, of course, actually not reiterate, I'm going to state I deviated from my norm. At the beginning of the meetings, usually I always like to state that before we meet for this regular formal board meeting, we worked really hard the week before at our work session where we hammer out a lot of information that gets kind of tied up the phone. So all the information that Mr. Beederman did provide us is not new, things that we're reviewing are not new. We've gone over things the week before. Our work sessions are open to the public, so we do invite people to come to vote as well. All right, so we will carry on. Want to consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meeting? Oh, sorry. What? What were you asking?
Trustees' recommendations.
Treasurer's... Treasurer, I did, I'm sorry. I'm editing myself. See, I deviated. All right, Treasurer's Recommendations. Consider approving the July 2019 financial statements, the monthly financial report, the fund activity report appropriations, general funds, funding spending report, the general fund summary, the general fund summary comparison, and purchase orders including statement number seven approved by administration then and now, certified by the Treasurer, supported by the Board resolution to like $71,779.16.
Come on.
Second.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings, July 22, 2019, the regular meeting, and the August 19, 2019, special meeting work session.
Come on.
Second.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. All right. Superintendent's Recommendation. Schedule A, the superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. Schedule B, the superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Schedule C, the superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Schedule D and D1, superintendent recommends the appointment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts for extra duty assignments.
Move. Second.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. For D2 and D3, I tried to do each one separate. All right, so for D2, the superintendent recommends the appointment of the personnel listed on Schedule D2 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
I'm staying.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. For Schedule D3, the superintendent recommends the appointment of the personnel listed on Schedule D3 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
I'm staying.
And Annie Self?
Yes. Consider approving the following transportation items. Consider approving the following Southwest Ohio Education Purchasing Council Resolution for the purchase of school buses, or is the Centralville City School Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of one or more school buses. Therefore, be it resolved, the Centralville Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize the Southwestern Ohio Education Purchasing Council to advertise and receive bids on said boards behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of nine school buses.
Come on. Second.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. Consider approving the acceptance of transportation responsibilities for the 2019-20 school year from the school districts and from the students listed.
Come on.
Second.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. Consider approving a transportation contract with Senior Assistance Incorporated for the 2019 fall semester.
Come on.
Okay.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. Consider approving the 2019-20 test security procedures required by the Highway Revise Code and Administrative Code 3401-13-01.
So moved.
I guess.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. We will call for a adjournment.
Move. Second.
Call the world peace, Mr. Beederman?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
And Annie Self?
Yes. All right, we adjourned. Thank you for coming.